One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Tanner, appreciate that. Okay, all of our board members are present except for Angie Oliver who is with us by phone. So, there are a couple addendums to the items which include additional information. And on written comment, media report, head start, and written comment on pertaining to the agenda items. We entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addendum. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda with the addendum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that motion has passed. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda is approval, oops, let me get this out of my way, of the consent agenda which includes authorization of payments of claim, approving supplemental financial information, and approving the monthly human resource activity. Is there a motion?
I move that we authorize payment of claims and financial supplemental information and human resource activity. Is that everything?
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? That motion is passed. Okay, next we will have Courtney Fisher provide us with the March recognitions.
Good evening, this is the first for me, I had to borrow these because I have some high issues today. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, trustees, Dr. Helm, Ms. Johnson, and student representatives. First off, before we start, I'd like to recognize we have a couple of Boy Scouts in the audience with us tonight, so I wanted to thank them for joining us and thank you for leading the pledge. We have our recognitions tonight to recognize several individuals who through their actions support and embody our district's mission to think more, learn more, and be more together. So first up, we have the Cake Awards. Our district believes that a safe, supportive, caring, and respectful environment is critical to student learning. The School District 25 Education Foundation, in partnership with McDonald's, supports the learner of the month award to recognize one elementary learner and one secondary learner from our district from October through May. The Cake Award celebrates positive character, attitude, kindness, and encouragement toward others. In addition to being recognized here at the monthly board meetings, the recipients also receive a baking kit to make cupcakes at home with their families, and special treats delivered to their classrooms to be enjoyed with and among their peers. Nominations for the Cake Award are submitted by a teacher who has observed the nominee's behavior and are approved by the school's principal. So first up for our March Cake Award for our Elementary Learner of the Month, please help me welcome Titan Humphries and his school principal, Mrs. Becky Bullock. Oh, wait, wait, wait. Titan, Titan, not yet, not yet. You're just gonna stand here and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell everybody a little bit about you, okay? So thank you so much for joining us here tonight. Titan is a kindergartner learner at Serenga Elementary School. And in her nomination letter, Mrs. Bullock, who is the school principal at Serenga, wrote, "A book about short essays written by Robert Fulgham entitled 'All I Need to Know I Learned in Kindergarten' is why I decided to nominate Titan Humphries for the Cake Award. Our world would be a better place if people would remember to live by some basic rules: be kind, smile often, tell those around you that you care, and clean up after yourself. Titan is a great example of these basic rules in his PM kindergarten class with his teacher, Mrs. Tonks." Is Mrs. Tonks with us here today? Thanks for being here. "One day Titan was asked to come down to the office. He was being checked out by his father. Ms. Robbie called his room. After a few minutes of waiting patiently, I had to walk down to his room to see what was wrong. Why was Titan not coming? He was crying at the group table. He loves school so much, he didn't want to leave. He loves learning. I persuaded him that he could come back the next day and continue. He wept down the hall. Before school, Titan interacts with all of his playmates outside. He works with classmates during centers, and if any of them need assistance, he is happy to help. He compliments his teachers and his paraprofessional during center time. He tries his best with any task given to him. If we could all be a little bit more like Titan, our days would be a little bit brighter." So Titan, in addition to being recognized here tonight, you are going to get this certificate for being such an exemplary model of character and kindness, and then you're also gonna get a fifty dollar, fifty dollar donation to your library in your name, and you get to help choose those books and put your name in those books, so that everybody who checks those books out will see your name in there as a Cake Award winner. And then you and Mrs. Bullock are also gonna receive a gift card from McDonald's, who is our partner for this award. Isn't that cool? So thank you so much, and help me congratulate Titan. Thank you so much.
Glad to meet you.
Glad to meet you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Titan. Now we have our March Cake Award for our Secondary Learner of the Month. Please help me welcome Marie, Mary Menser and her teacher, Mr. Tanner Saxon to the podium. Come on up, Mr. Saxon. Okay, and Principal, Mrs. Amy Prescott. Thank you for being here tonight, Mary. Mary's a junior at New Horizon High School, and in his nomination letter, Mr. Saxon wrote, "Mary is a great student here at our school that balances being a mother with getting top grades. She's always got a kind smile and treats everybody with kindness. What's most impressive about Mary is her willingness to help other students. She's had to navigate some of the tougher things in life and is always willing to help students who are going through similar things. She takes extra time to sit down with them, give them appropriate tips and advice, and even help them with logistics, helping them get where they need to be, help them become more self-reliant, etc. Mary is definitely one of our most selfless students and helps contribute to an accepting and tolerant school culture. Mary is one of a kind." So Mary, you also get this certificate to keep, and also you'll be recognized among your peers with a treat for your class. And you and Mr. Saxon will each receive a gift card from McDonald's, as well as that fifty dollar donation to your school library in your name. So congratulations, thank you so much for being such an exemplary model of character. It looks like you have some great support. Thank you all for being here. Now we move on to our March Employee of the Month, or our PIEZ Award. The Employee of the Month PIEZ Award recognizes our employees who positively influence educational success. The award is for employees who go above and beyond in that effort. Lookout Credit Union partners with us in providing this award. So tonight, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Allison Winder as March's PIEZ Award recipient, if you'll join me at the podium, along with Mrs. Paige Warfield, who nominated Mrs. Winder.
Hello, thank you for being here.
In her nomination letter, Mrs. Warfield wrote, "Allison is a role model for learners, teachers, and staff at Chubbuck. I don't think I've ever seen her without a smile. Despite the fact that she has had some long days with limit testing learners, her sense of humor definitely makes the hard days easier. With her positive attitude and warm personality are reflected in the atmosphere in her classroom. There have been multiple occasions this year that I've walked in, on her class doing some activity, which had the kids so excited they could hardly speak, grins from ear to ear. She is truly gifted at helping learners love learning. Allison puts so much extra time and effort into preparing these fun and engaging experiences for her learners. If you come by Chubbuck on a Saturday morning, you will see her quietly working away in her classroom, preparing for the week. She's not only an asset to students who get to learn from her, but also to the staff who are privileged to work with her. Chubbuck is lucky to have such a light on our staff." So Mrs. Winder, you will receive this. Thank you. This is a certificate as well as a fifty dollar gift card courtesy of our partners with this award, Lookout Credit Union. And then Mrs. Warfield, you get a twenty dollar gift card courtesy of Lookout Credit Union. So thank you so much for being such an outstanding member of our staff, and if you will also say hello to our board and let them congratulate you. Thank you so much. And that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Courtney, appreciate that. Okay, next on the agenda is public written comment on topics not pertinent to the agenda, action items. Written comment was received and included in the packet, I have one request, and that is, Alana, Alana Baldwin? And this is on items that are not on the agenda for action.
This is actually regarding the, the policy change on the student dress code?
Nope.
No.
There was one request that we received that had the neon sign over there as well.
Yeah, the new head?
Um, I was told that it was not for this meeting.
Right, so if you wanted to talk about it, then it would be at this point on the agenda where it's not on the agenda, you can talk about.
Okay. My recommendation for that sign was, I know it wants to be publicly on the screen. My recommendation was to, if it's gonna be publicly displayed, to display it with public facts, of historical facts of how and why it's here. You know, like historically, the cavalry would, you know, they'd cut off heads, you know, of indigenous peoples and put them on mounts, and they'd put them up. And then they would have effigies like that, and they'd put them up. So I think if we put some type of historical facts is, is like, we went through these things and these issues happened, and you know, we just wanna just put the his, true history out there of what it is and put it along with it when we display it. Cause I understand you guys wanna put it by the pavilion, to just put a plaque with some true historical facts along with it of why it's here, what it's done, and who it affects. And that was my only comment on that one.
Okay, okay, thank you. We'll go call you back for the next one. Okay, next, excuse me, next on the agenda is student representative reports, and I don't know if we have any of yours. JJ? We got one. JJ, from Highland High School. No, from Century High School. I'm sorry JJ. No, my bad.
Um, good evening, members of the board. My name is JJ Anderson, and I'm Century High School's co-student body president. I'm eager to fill you in on what has been going on at Century the past month. Um, we've started third trimester, as well as spring sports, and we're all excited to finish the year off strong, especially the seniors. Uh, this trimester, we have several new students starting at CHS, so to welcome them, Student Council signed welcome letters, and the Counseling Center donated candy bags to give with the letters to each new student. Um, Century completed, competed in this year's Science Bowl, and we are proud to report that our competitors placed first, and we will be heading to Nationals. Um, Student Council took on a project making buttons. I brought this up at the last meeting, but it's grown into an even bigger thing since then. Um, so we've made them for each AP and dual credit class as a way to congratulate students for their ambition and, and hard work. Um, and students have gotten very creative in designing these, and they have become quite popular. So we started making buttons for all of the clubs and spring sports as well. Um, and it's been fun to see students in the halls with their different array of buttons on their backpacks. They wear them very proudly, and they're always excited to add to their collection. Um, our March Madness three-on-three basketball tournament is in full swing, and it's been a blast. We have twenty teams organized in a bracket, playing every day at lunch. Uh, the whole school is involved, as we have many students and teacher participants playing in the tournament, and the gym is full of students and teacher spectators as well. Students made even more buttons for this event in hopes of raising money for the animal shelter. All proceeds from button sales at this event will be donated to the Pocatello Animal Shelter. Um, we are very excited and proud to announce that our debate team placed second place at state. Uh, we are proud of all their hard work and dedication, and Coach Marie Milovanovic as well. Our Diamondback Dramatics is wrapping up their last play of the year. They're performing a play called Putnam County's 25th Annual Spelling Bee. It is hilarious and very well performed, and we applaud them for all of their practice time and effort that has gone into it and made it such a wonderful, wonderful performance. Um, lastly, we are very excited to go into spring break next week. When we come back, we plan to be in class officer elections, have a spring and a summer spirit week, and an assembly to celebrate spring sports. Uh, this trimester has already been really good to us so far, and we look forward to everything else it has in store for us. Um, that's all that's been happening at Century the past couple of weeks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you JJ. Is that all we have, so we don't have Tanya Ward from, okay, all right. Okay, so next on the agenda, Courtney Fisher will provide the media report and communication relationships update.
Hello again. So in your addendum tonight, we have the media and community relations report for March of 2022. In that report are links to articles that we always want to draw your attention to that may be of interest to you. Uh, many of those headlines include, "Pocatello Cheerleading Coach Wins State Cheer Coach of the Year," "Parent Buys Pizza for Teacher Staff at Lewis and Clark Elementary," that was a really fun event. Uh, "School Board Members Fill the State House for ISBA's Day on the Hill," "Idaho Drops College Entrance Exam as Graduation Requirement," "Historic Preservation Committee Okays Pocatello High School Signs," "High School Art Show Showing at the Pocatello Art Center Through March 17th." I highly encourage you to go check that out if you have the chance. Uh, it's in historic downtown Pocatello. And then renovations underway at Holt Arena to be complete in 2023, and I draw that to your attention because I do not believe that will impact graduation. We are all set for graduation on June 2nd, um, coming up really soon. Our livestream board meetings for the past couple of meetings, on February 15th, our regular board meeting, we had a hundred and forty views compared to five hundred and seventy-five in January. On March 8th, work session, we had forty-seven views compared to one sixty-one in February. Um, on social media, we continue to grow our audiences. Um, our largest audience continues to be Facebook with nearly eleven hundred followers. On Twitter, we have just over four hundred and fifty-three followers. Instagram, we have just under twelve hundred, and on YouTube, about three hundred and fifty-nine subscribers. Our website analytics, we're continuing to build out our website, so we continue to watch those analytics for the last twenty-eight days. Uh, we were down about twelve percent to forty-three thousand users, and same thing with our sessions, we were down sixty-two thousand sections over sixty-nine last month. Uh, sixty-six point five percent of users accessed the site from a mobile device, which is why we're heavily concentrating on making that new website mobile friendly. So no matter where our visitors come, it will be responsive. Uh, we had a training for our school webmasters, um, two weeks ago, and so we are definitely on track to meet our warranty phase deadline on May 18th. We're very excited. The webmasters got a sneak peek of what that website looks like, and we, we heard some good reviews so far. Um, our most frequently visited pages, we had just over a hundred and five thousand page views, which is substantial, and then I listed the top ten, which include home and some of the, the general favorites. In terms of community relations, I wanted to draw to your attention and put on the record, when we had the ISBA Day on the Hill, we noticed for a quorum on that, and there were some concerns that there was a meeting, open meeting violation, because that didn't get posted to our, our social media pages or to the media. So we did some investigation, and there was no open meeting violation. We are not required to post or notice for a quorum when there is no official business conducted at those meetings. Even so, we went above and beyond to post that notice to our website, as well as to the district physical site. Normally, we also post those on our social media, post them, send notices to the media, but because of President's Day, we inadvertently overlooked that. We still go above and beyond on a general basis, um, so just wanted to draw your attention. No open meeting violation occurred, and wanna thank Ms. Johnson because she does go above and beyond to make sure that, um, we are in compliance with that law. And then just a little, uh, final thing, just wanna encourage you to attend at least one of Superintendent Ibarra's visits this Friday. Would love to have you there at Chubbuck at eight-thirty, or Highland High School at eleven AM. So, any questions? That concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, our board committee meetings are included in the packet, are self-explanatory. So now is the time for presentation, the proposed budget adjustments for the 2021-2022 school year, which will be presented by Jonathan Balls and Carl Smart? Or just Donovan?
I believe it's me. Yeah, we took, um, this evening, and he, uh, Mr. Smart is available. However, this is. However, this is the same material that we reviewed in our work session last week. This does officially start the budget hearing that was noticed in the paper, because we're here to amend the 2021-2022 budget. And just in brief, I wanted to just to review how we got to this point, and it's all a matter of timing. State law says that we have to set the budget in June prior to even the current budget being done. And so we're looking two to three months trying to set the next year's budget, and we haven't even finished our current year budget. The federal dollars don't get finalized until the fall, but yet again, we have to have a tentative budget in June, or even in May, so you can approve it in June. And then also, last year was unique that with the state legislature wrapping up so late in the session, we really didn't have finalized numbers for some of those state dollars, and subsequently negotiations were a little later and so forth. So that's how we get to always amend our budget every year. So again, the documents are in front of you and online as well, that show a summary of the amended budget that was published in the March 4 Idaho State Journal, of the general fund being the largest, and then all other funds, details of those general fund expenditures from salaries to benefits, and some contingency reserves as well. The largest adjustment there being the beginning balance, again, excuse me, the ending balance that gets transferred over to the beginning balance for this budget year. That's always a crystal ball trying to figure out how much that will be. And I'm, that's, we will continue to do a better job and try to refine that and get that as close as we can. And that's why we're here to amend the budget, so it again is a useful tool for you in your fiscal responsibilities for the school district. The next page again shows the individual fund adjustments, different fund numbers and so forth. I will highlight, again, unique to these, this year and the next two or three years, as we spend this down, but again, almost a little over $25 million in one-time federal dollars to be spent everywhere from Head Start to some modulators that we'll be talking about later in the meeting, modular classrooms, and then also semester funds as well. So again, those total budgets are a little bit, well, quite a bit inflated for federal dollars. Again, lastly, and then the last document is just the individual fund adjustments, the different adjustments made to each of those funds. I will mention that each one of these adjustments is done either by, the board has asked us to do once the budget has already started, or through federal dollars, federal mandates that we need to, you know, make sure our budgets match their awards from the federal dollars. Any questions? Again... Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Jonathan. Appreciate that. Okay. We'll now recess this meeting and convene a public hearing to solicit input on the proposed budget adjustment for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the proposed budget? I didn't get any papers on that. Okay. Okay, we will close the public hearing and reconvene a regular meeting. Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt the proposed budget adjustment for the 2021-2022 school year. Is there a motion?
Mayor Bond moves that the board adopt the proposed budget adjustments for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I don't hear any proposed. Are you with us, Angie? Are you on mute? Anyway, that motion has passed. We'll now move on to curriculum and instruction, safety, school safety and athletics. We will start with elementary education with Ms. Lori Crane. We'll report on the following: Head Start, 2022-2023, continuous grant application and program updates, 21st Century After School Program, kindergarten registration, all the kindergarten and the STEM event.
And I'm going to let Ms. Lasmac start with the Head Start.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to present this evening. We will start with the monthly board report. So our enrollment at the end of February, the program had 148 children enrolled. That did result in 15 children who withdrew during that month, half of them due to the closure of the Taihe classroom. We did not have any new children enrolled. We were wanting to make sure things got settled, and we are looking at now enrolling more children when we come back from spring break. Attendance for February was at 76.66%. Again, illness was the number one reason. Personnel report, so we had four new hires for this past month, so we were encouraged by that. A full-day teacher assistant, full-day classroom assistant, part-day classroom assistant, and family advocate. Unfortunately, we did also experience three resignations from a full-day teacher, a full-day classroom assistant, and part-day classroom assistant. So I think that I would attribute to some of the stresses that we've experienced this school year. Policy council on March 10th, at their regular policy council meeting, the council reviewed and approved the selection criteria form for '22-'23, and they are scheduled to meet again this Thursday to review and consider for approval the '22-'23 continuation grant application with all of the documents that you also have before you. So tonight, I just wanted to highlight a few of the items that were in your packet and the addendum. You have already looked at the selection criteria. The next item is the self-assessment report. And just to give you a little bit of background, the self-assessment is required to be conducted annually. In it, we review our five-year program goals and objectives, our school readiness goals, and implementation of the Head Start program performance standards. And I'm pleased to say that even with all the challenges we've had this year, our programs continues to provide quality services for our children and our families. So in the report, it identified program strengths and systematic issues, as well as then recommendations that we put together. Overall strengths, highlighting moving forward with updating our job descriptions and realigning positions on the pay schedule, trying to ensure that we are offering competitive wages, looking at upgrading our program IT system, which we received a lot of support through the district to help us with our data collection, and upgrading and increasing, strengthening our health services. We have a health services advisory committee, as well as our own program wellness committee, and they did a lot of work this year to help guide us again through the COVID-19 protocols. Systematic-wise, we would summarize them, of course, program communication, which is always one of the systems that programs continue to work on improving. Training our new staff, we've had quite a few new staff in trying to find time to provide adequate training was something that popped up. Also, we recognize that now that we've got more people using a database, we need to make sure that they are adequately trained in entering the data, so everything is accurate. We recognize that we still have some policies and procedures that need to be upgraded, and that we want to take a look at how we are providing disability services for our children in collaboration with the LEA. Then, in recommendations, our primary focus was looking at strengthening communication, increasing training, and of course, rebuilding and establishing a strong workforce for the following year. So any questions on the self-assessment report? We did, for your pleasure, include what they call our funding letter, which every program looks forward to receiving, which we received back in December. The funding is at the current level as for next year as it is for this year at $2,513,001. And you will see we have two funding pools from the Office of Head Start. So we have the program operations, which is the primary source, and then training and technical assistance program funding for our staff for training. When looking at a breakout of budget categories, of course, more than 80% of our funding goes to personnel and fringe benefits. Then we have some areas for travel, supplies, a little bit of contractual, which is services we receive and reimburse the district for, and then the all-encompassing other category, and then, of course, indirect charges. So you can see the breakout for both program operations and training technical assistance on that preliminary budget sheet. Then, the preliminary program design and approach, what we are looking at is pretty much very similar to what we have in place for this current year. One of the things that we are able to do with our application is there typically is a non-federal share waiver requirement, and our levels are set at 20% of the, has to be match for 80% of the funding that we get for the government to run our program. Because of the current situation with the pandemic, we were optimistic that we were going to be able to generate some in-kind, which we refer to it as a non-federal share for this year, but more things popped up that have not allowed us to. So we still have the ability to put into the grant without doing a special waiver request to do a non-federal share waiver, so to speak. So we are putting, writing that into the grant that for one more year, we want to look at 100%, though we will track and see how we are doing. Things that we're looking at, budget changes for the next year, of course, potentially a 3% increase in staff salaries, and a 31% increase in fringe benefits, primarily looking at a change in health insurance. One of the ways, a couple of ways that we looked at our program being able to meet those increases, because of course, it's dependent upon any new funding for Head Start. And right now, we are currently looking at the same funding level as currently. But we will be no longer needing to put in for remodel or renovation line items that we have in there for this year, and that was primarily looking at things that we would need to do, like relocating some classrooms back over to Lincoln, potentially doing some fencing and things of that nature. And then the second line item was decrease in equipment line items. So we're not proposing to purchase any new equipment next year. We believe that those funds then will help to make up the difference, that we will need to cover the increase in fringe benefits. Otherwise, everything stays the same as far as our total enrollment of altogether 183 children, still the same number of four-year-old and three-year-old slots, still providing half of our classes with a part-day option and the other half in a full-day option, and continuing the number of staff, not necessarily adding any new positions. So any question with the budget or program design?
I just had a question, and maybe Jonathan. I mean, is your salaries and health benefits, is that separate from the district?
It is all out of our federal funding.
So it's out of your fund, but it's managed by the district or no? Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm getting a nod from Jonathan. That was just my question, if you were...
Yeah.
So, yep. Head Start is Fund 274 on that list, and so Kathy's right.
And 276.
Yeah, and, thank you, and 276. Those get funded straight from the federal government, but then, yes, they get paid by our payroll department.
Overarching, okay.
Overarching is paid by our payroll department and benefits department.
So will there, if in fact, and I know I might be going off on a tangent, but if the school district adopts the new insurance, does that include the Head Start?
Yes.
It does.
It does, as well as any salary increases.
Okay.
Because we are considered district employees.
Very good.
So, yeah, so the indirect that you will see, that is to help cover, offset a little bit the fiscal and accounting that the district does on our behalf.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, yeah. There is one waiver that you will be asked to look at tonight, and that is what we refer to as the transportation waiver, to waive the provision of the required bus monitors. We have bus monitors in place, and each year, we do strive to have an additional person on the vehicle with the drivers. But sometimes, programs are not able to secure them, and because then of the radio system that we have and the constant communication of staying in touch with the buses and such, we've been able to put the waiver in just in case we're not able to get monitors for next year, so that we are covered. So we will be asking the board to once again approve that waiver request, along with then, I have to get back to my notes here, the, to approve for your, you know, for consideration approving the submission of the continuation grant application for '22 and '23, which will appear later on the agenda. So, any other questions that I can entertain? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and I'll continue on with the report. For the 21st Century After School Program, we'll be hearing about the, if we received the grant for those four schools, we'll hear about that after spring break. So that's always, seems to be a long wait between submitting it and hearing, but we're very hopeful. And the summer program, we're beginning to plan. It will be eight days, eight full days from 8 to 5 in June. So we're excited to offer that for our learners. And those are, they go first to the students who participated in the 21st Century After School Program. They'll be offered, and those slots will be open. There are about 100 students, and then if it doesn't fill up with the students who were enrolled in the after-school program during the school year, then we can open it up to others in the district. Kindergarten registration opens up on March 18th to complete online, and then parents will go to the schools to finalize that on March 31st. And I'll be reporting to you the numbers at the next board meeting, because we monitor that very closely on, you know, how many students do we have register on the first day, and we'll be able to show you some historical numbers, so that we can be making some comparisons there. For full-day kindergarten, Senate Bill 1373 passed in the Senate Ed Committee, went to the full, went to the floor of the Senate and passed in the Senate last week. It went to the House Ed Committee yesterday, and the House Ed Committee passed at 9 to 5, so we will go to the House floor for a full vote from the, a vote from the full House. So I don't know when. I was surprised, I looked on the agenda, and I didn't see it on the agenda yesterday for even the Ed Committee. So we'll just keep monitoring it. I checked right before I came in today and haven't heard anything. So we'll be watching it very closely. Within this bill, it changes how the literacy dollars are funded and how they're divided out. Currently, they're divided based on the, you get more based on the number of your students who are not proficient. With this new bill, more money goes to schools whose students improve or reach proficiency. So there's some little changes to that. And in a companion bill, there's one that adds more dollars, which can then be used to support a full-day option. And so we'll, if this all passes, we'll be coming to you with a recommendation for approval of a full-day option for our learners.
Can I ask Lori how you, I mean, and maybe, again, I never know, when's the right time to ask some of these questions? But, I mean, you say little change, that's actually a pretty significant change, in my mind, that we're now rewarding proficiency versus... Are you concerned about this?
You know, the...
About this? I mean...
I have a lot of things I'm concerned about.
I mean, when we were there in Boise, you know, you heard the one comment that the one House rep said, "I'm tired of funding failure," which was totally the wrong audience to make that kind of comment to. But it seems like that's what's being pushed forward. And is that... which was totally the wrong audience to make that kind of comment to, but it seems like that's what's being pushed forward, and, and is that?
I think with the increase in, we, we will go cautiously and move cautiously forward, but with the increase that they're, that they're proposing, um, we'll be able to make a full kindergarten a reality in our district.
Very good.
And I don't know how that, how it will impact. I mean, every year, there's been some different changes to that, and so we've had to kind of weather the ups and downs with that. Um, I think we're making great growth.
Right.
And when I, yesterday, I, yeah, I, I run down the hall and chase the superintendent, "Look at these numbers!" Because March, we showed some, we showed some great growth in our, um, in our IStation numbers, that, which is the test that they use to determine that, and, you know, we're looking really good. So I mean, I'm feeling very positive about that today, so.
Well, good, okay. I wanted to hear.
I, I think with the legislature, there is a certain level of accountability that they expect certainly. And, uh, again, historically, we have done very well, even when I was a principal at Jefferson. Our, our early learners, our kindergartners would come in, sometimes we would have thirty to forty percent proficient, and by the end of the school year, eighty-five percent. So that will be incredible. I mean, looking at the results, and I talked to some other superintendents yesterday who have already started with the whole-day model, and, um, one commented that the learners that started a little bit behind are actually performing better than the kids who were higher proficiency that only attended a half-day last year. And so they, they're seeing really good results in, in these other districts. So I think where we start, where we historically landed, I think we will be higher. So I don't see that as a detriment to us, and, but it does sound kind of, and especially the source that you mentioned.
Right.
It just rubbed us the wrong way because the comment about.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's not why we're in this.
And when I do read that, I see they're, they're looking at growth, and so it's not, they say reaching proficiency, and so that means that you're looking at the growth, making sure that learners grow. I know, right now, we've increased twenty-five percentage points, that's an average in our district in kindergarten. I don't have the others off the top of my head, and, and, you know, we, granted, we, you know, we move a lot in kindergarten, it does, but that's, that's very good, and so we're, we're doing some things.
So I guess the follow-up question, and again, maybe this is premature to ask, but is it going to be based on district numbers, not by individual schools? Is that?
Yep, that's right.
It'll be the overall district growth?
But we'll, well, individual schools is where it'll start, you know, they'll look at each school and how each learner, that's what they do right now, they look at how many learners we have proficient. So it flows, and then it flows into the school and, or into the district, and the district determines then. That's the way that we do. We, we've made some joint decisions on how that money should be, um, utilized.
Okay.
So it isn't like, well, you don't have enough money at this school in order to fund it, but you do over here at this one, you know, we don't, we operate so that we have consistency among our thirteen elementary schools. Bye.
Thank you.
So, this has been an interesting time here, and fun things out there in elementary schools, if you can get out, there's lots going on. We have STEM Up is, uh, just really a focus on science, and so starting March first, we started teaching science. Well, we've been teaching science all year, but we had a focus then on sound waves, and in our kindergarten first grade, in our fourth and fifth grades, erosion, weathering. So we've been, uh, all of it, the teachers have all been teaching lessons, building background on, on those concepts. And then this week is really the STEM Up Fun Week. So they started the week with some, uh, it's the same all the way across the district. So we have activities in all of our classrooms that are, that are the same, you know, at, at all the schools that deal with, um, sound waves for those grades, and then weathering and erosion. When I was out at Indian Hills today, our kindergartens, all of our kindergarten classes, and they're doing it in kindergarten classes, first-grade classes across the district, they were taking little tubes and trying different materials over the top of the tubes to see, to make kazoo's, and they were having a blast, you know, does the foil make it sound better, or does the plastic? And so lots of fun things going on there, um, just to really focus in on science. And then they'll have a STEM showcase, each school will have a STEM showcase. They'll be showing other learners what they, you know, but, budding up in the schools and showing other learners what they've learned, and then, you know, sharing with parents what they've learned. And then we have these bags that go home with all of our, with all of our learners, um, and ISU purchased the bags for us, and they have extension activities for our families to be, uh, extending that learning, um, at home over spring break. So some really fun activities to do and things that the kids can take home and try and have everything there. We've counted out popsicle sticks and all those kinds of things, just to make sure that they have those to, to try these things. And then on Wednesday, which is tomorrow, we, um, are invited, uh, ISU is having a tech expo, and they've opened it up to our elementary students. So from five to six-thirty tomorrow at Holterina is the tech expo with our, our learners are all invited there. And everybody who, who goes, they get to sign a little, um, card, and then we'll have a drawing at each school for a drone, and ISU has purchased those, ISU College of Technology has purchased those for us to be having those drawings. So we've got a lot of fun things happening in our elementary schools.
Cool.
Thank you, Dad. Chairman Facer told me of his experience today at Indian Hills with the STEM Up.
Yeah, we, they were doing a sound wave, they were building, I don't know what you'd even call it, but they put their sticks across a, um, a string, and they pull it tight, and they were showing how the sound waves can move, and, and the kids were way involved in it, and it was, in each classroom, I was in three different classrooms, and they were all kind of different, but they were all the same in way. But it was really interesting to, to see how they do that. Kids are pretty excited about doing that, so.
And I, and I don't know if you talked, the teachers were excited too, which I, was really fun to talk to them. We have a program called Mystery Science, which they can use, and so, um, we really helped to, Carrie Thomas and Janelle Larvis, some of our instructional coaches really worked to make it easy for them to get going on these. And so people delved into maybe areas that they haven't done before, so I think it was a, a nice nudge to be, um, teaching some more science and to be, um, you know, really seeing how fun that that really is.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, next we have Sue Pettit will report on the following, early graduation requests, policy eighty-five oh-four, student dress code, first reading for adoption, and the twenty-two, twenty-three New Horizons School Calendar.
And just FYI, the tech expo is actually on Thursday for the secondary students, so we have a bunch going Thursday to the tech expo.
Is that at the Mini-Dog too?
Mm-hmm. So, um, first off, we have early graduation requests, and these are students that finished all of their classes, um, at, either at the very end of second try or two or three days after. It's most of our, um, online learners, and they had finished their classes just a couple of days late. So they didn't get them into the last board meeting. Um, however, they have all finished their classes, and, um, they are either going to school or, uh, going to work to attend school in the fall, or we have one that is going to be joining the military here shortly, and so they would very much like to, to, uh, have their graduation approved and be able to get on with their life, so. Um, for policy eighty-five oh-four, the student dress code, we talked about this at our work session, and, um, we're asking that it be adopted on first reading with the changes that we, um, added in there, and that had to do with, um, having, letting, allowing our Native American students to, um, wear their traditional cultural and religious items, um, inclusive of an eagle feather and/or beating, beaded items, um, such as necklaces or medallions, and also, um, beading around the edges of their mortar board, which is part of their, um, culture also. So if, unless you have any questions, um, that's up for action for you today, and we're hoping to do it on first reading so that, um, there's time to do that work. It takes a while to do that beading, if that's the, um, option that they would like to attempt to do. Questions on any of that? Okay, um, New Horizons Calendar, um, that has to be approved separate because they do blocks and not just trimesters, and so you have a copy of that, um, in there also, and that just needs an approval. And then last, but I think that's my last one. Is that my last one?
Yep.
Yep, I have another piece of paper, but I don't need it. Do you have any questions on New Horizons Calendar?
Well, when I was looking at the calendar and noticed that, at one block, there was an end-of-trimester at the front of the, the next day when they started it, and on the next one, there wasn't, and I thought, oh, you've lost those off. I see that that was just a trimester, trimester for the whole school, not for them. So I was confused.
We got it.
I got it straight in my mind finally, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Tanya Wilk will report on the following, month, monthly suspension report, out-of-state overnight travel request, camp request, use of district football equipment for summer camps, and athletic sponsorship agreement with Idaho Central Credit Union.
That was a mouthful.
That is.
Good evening. Um, just wanted to share, um, the suspension report you see there. Um, and then the next one is the overnight camp request. I know that we had gotten prior permission for this, the date is prior to this, they had, uh, statewide math counts, and, um, that's all grant-funded, and so we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware and approved the, um, busing to Boise. And then, um, we have a couple camp requests. We have a football camp, um, for Highland High School, and a little girls' cheer camp, um, for the summer, so we would like those approved. If you have any questions on those camps, you'll see a lot more coming in April, get you all squared away.
These are all local, right?
Correct. So this is camps that they're putting on.
Right.
So the football program will offer, um, for the little guys in town at Highland High School, and, and guys and girls for the cheer. And then the next order of business is the football helmets and pad for summer camps from IHSAA. We have to have board approval, um, that they can use their pads and helmets for no, up to five days, and they have the varsity schedule there and the JV freshman schedule as well at each of the schools. Any questions?
No.
Okay, and then the final is, um, like we said before, we're, we're really doing well with some sponsorships and opportunities, and Idaho Central Credit Union has offered us a sponsorship with a video board to be placed at Century High School Stadium this summer, along with the additional bleachers and things that we're already in existing. The term is, uh, ten years with the few years left to, of the wear and tear of the, the video board. So we felt like this was a good agreement. We also have these video boards in all of the gyms currently, and so it's the same company, Daktronics, so we're getting really good at using those. If you saw the basketball games, we got to test those out, it's pretty awesome. They come with a sound system as well, so that allows the, the stadium to have a sound system.
That's great.
Any questions on the contract?
So this is just, they basically buy it, install it, there's no, and then it, it goes for five years, is that what I read?
We wrote down up to the, the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-thirty-four.
Oh, okay, so it's beyond.
And adding the life of the board. Obviously, we wouldn't take down the ICCU logo of part of the board.
That's what I was, I was gonna say, how? Is that the lifespan of those boards? I mean, is that what it was? Okay.
Yeah, typically, and the ones in the gyms, same thing, they bought them, they installed them, and it was pretty awesome. ICCU really has stepped up and, and put these in a lot of school districts. That's awesome.
They're great, very nice.
Questions?
No, I think that's great. I think I'm excited.
Okay.
Thank you, Tanya.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, all right, next on the topic is, on, on the agenda is business operations. We'll be centered, be presented by Jonathan Balls, who will report on Idaho General Fund Revenue Report and Bid Words.
Hello again, board members, appreciate, again, appreciate your time. Um, previously, I did fail to, to acknowledge our accountant, Kate Teeter, regarding the budget, and of course, uh, Mr. Carl Smart, for all their hard work on that budget. So I, I was remiss in leaving their, them out. Uh, definitely couldn't do, do our work in the business office without them. We're a great, great team there. Um, just briefly, this Idaho General Fund Revenue Report, again, that first statement, I think, tells it all that, again, the state has adjusted and put new revenue and, uh, expenditure forecasts. And since they did that, we're falling behind as a state, uh, behind those forecasts. I highlighted that sentence two or three times. So we'll just kind of honor that. Again, it's just being new in, into the fiscal, their fiscal year, and, uh, well, actually, since the, the forecast was changed in December. And so we'll just kind of be wa, watching that as well. Again, the revenues, uh, continue to come, uh, uh, come in strong. February was a little bit lower than anticipated, so. Again, by just, by way of inf, information. Uh, we are in full swing in bidding services and products and projects. And so this is, uh, have you seen, this is, uh, uh, will be kind of the norm for the next two months. I'll bring to you several bids that we've solicited and, and opened. The first one is for the stadium bleachers at Century High School and Hawthorne Middle School, which will be the, um, Pocatello High School Stadium. Twenty-three vendors, uh, were invited to bid, and only one, um, submitted a bid there. This is a turnkey operation from the cement pad to even, um, we are going to remove the visiting bleachers that are way too low with football players standing in front of them. And so this bleachers, uh, includes all that, of course, and then the new installation of the bleachers, um, for both, uh, Century High and, uh, Century High School and the Hawthorne Middle School. Bringing those, uh, both of those facilities to, um, do up, that, that can handle the, the crowds that we would anticipate there. Again, M and S Development and Construction for the total, uh, bid amount of six hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars. Any questions on that one?
Those bids were over budget, over the budget.
Yes, thank you, yep, that, I didn't want to hide that one. Uh, yes, those were over the budget, um. For a couple of different reasons, I will admit first that that was a low budget, low budget numbers. Um, those were, uh, that, uh, three forty-five nine hundred was actually probably three or four months ago just for the bleachers. But then we didn't add into the, the other things that we wanted to, the, the cement pad, um, you know, transporting and, uh, the existing bleachers, uh, to other locations in the district and so forth, so. So yes, we feel that we, we still have the money to be able to absorb, absorb that amount, but yes, we'll do better on, on that one. Thank you.
Well, in addition, Mr. Balls, we've talked about the email that, uh, Mr. Spindel received in regard to the materials.
Oh, oh, just the-
I think that would be a light with the board on the bleachers.
Oh, okay, if I, if I'm remembering correctly, um, basically, I, I don't know, I don't remember all the details, but it was, it was, oh, yes, yes, it was. Um, this bleacher company said, just because of the price of aluminum, that has just skyrocketed even in the last couple, uh, couple of weeks. That was what was, uh, one of the big driving factors, you know, of, of, of this. Um, and these numbers are big even compared to what we'd previously, previously had done. So, so yes, there's definitely price increases as well on that, on the material for those bleachers.
Can you comment, I mean, twenty-three vendors, I mean, is that typical to have that many and then have not, only one?
Um.
Or is it just?
You'll, you'll see, and I, I'm getting a flavor of that as well, this is my first bidding season as well. Um, the twenty-three vendors are basically all of our general contractors. And so it, it, it takes kind of a special contractor that can work with a bleacher company and that wants to work with the bleacher company, um, because we're, obviously, the, the cost of the material is, is the greatest cost of, of this bleacher. Um, so you'll see, yes, sometimes that is, uh, we, we were hopeful that we'd get more than one. However, this is a local and established vendor, and we feel very comfortable with that. He did, uh, some previous bleacher work for us as well, so.
Thank you.
It is a bit unusual, uh,
It, thank you, yeah.
Three, four, six.
Correct.
It just depends on the project.
Correct.
But one is a little unusual, again, probably assigned with the times and all the construction that's going on, and then someone who has the capacity to do all the work is Jonathan Ball.
Yes, and I'll, I'll point out some different scenarios to help get you a flavor, flavor for this. And, and a lot of times, it just depends on the, on the project, so.
And the bids are online too, right, on the district website, so if any, so it's public?
It, it is all public knowledge. The bid require, um, the bid requirements, the bid docs are online. I will check the, well, and this, of course, is, this, this document is online as well, so yes, you are correct. Again, moving on to the, to the next one, this is the, uh, some carpet in Cove Base, uh, there at Pocky, uh, Pocatello High School, Century High School, and our gateway, uh, This is the, uh, some carpet in Cove Base, uh, there at Pocky, uh, Pocatelle High School, Century High School and our Gateway, um, building. Again, uh, five vendors were invited to, to bid. Uh, two vendors, uh, put in a bid, uh, wall-to-wall, uh, commercial flooring here in town and Carpets Plus, uh, color tile. And, uh, as you can see, uh, the low bid came, uh, for Carpets Plus. And so later on in the meeting, it is our recommendation that we award, uh, the carpet in Cove Base bid, uh, to Carpets Plus in the amount of a hundred and six thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and eighty-three cents.
They're pretty close, aren't they?
Yeah, yeah. There was, there was some, some good, good one there. And then, yes. Uh, the next, next bid is for, uh, four modular classrooms at our head, uh, for Head Start there at Lincoln, uh, Early Childhood Center. Again, this is to replace those, uh, modulators that burnt down almost two and a half years ago. So we're anxious to get, to get this one done. Again, ten vendors were invited to bid. We received, uh, bids from four vendors, as you can see listed there. The low bid and our recommendation is to go with US Modular out of Boise, Idaho in the amount of four hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred twenty. Uh, this is just the bid for the modulators themselves and to basically construct them, transport them to, to Lincoln and to, to put them on our foundation, which we will bid out as well to, to do that. These will be permanent structures per the federal, the federal guidelines that to receive this, the federal dollars from Head Start, they had to be on a permanent foundation.
So this comes from federal dollars?
Yes, yes, exactly. So this is, um, yep, this is, this is part of the carryover that, uh, Mrs. Lozmac, uh, I was, talked about, um, a- as well. So yes.
So another question I have.
Yes.
As you mentioned, them burning down, was there no insurance?
There is, there is. It, it covered about half of that.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So there was some insurance at that time. So we'll use that plus the federal dollars, um, and, and do some things at that, that side as well. Yes. Okay, last bid is for some VCT tile at our Hawthorne Middle School. Uh, last year, we did the hallway. This year, we're gonna do one side of the classrooms on all three levels. Uh, this, uh, this, it will be abated, uh, ahe- ahead of time. But again, five vendors were invited to bid. A- and again, this is a kind of a scenario, the, the, the two bidders that showed up for this bid opening were the two that mentioned on the carpet. And, uh, the one vendor, once they received the carpet bid, they did not submit the bid for VCT. So it's that type of thing. And, and we, we were happy to kind of spread our work among different, uh, companies in town. Good for us to, to ensure that the work can be done and completed on time. And then also, we're happy to kind of spread our business out to, to many different, uh, businesses here in town. Again, uh, so we recommend that wall-to-wall, uh, commercial flooring be awarded the, uh, VCT tile bid for Hawthorne Middle School in the amount of forty-one thousand three hundred dollars. Any, any other questions? Thank you.
I don't have any. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, um. Okay, next on the agenda is Employee Services, which will be presented by Carl Smart. He will report on the following: Infinite Campus, Campus, ICE, ICE Technology Department Update, Student Enrollment and Wellness Dashboard.
All right. And I will be very brief with my port of the agenda tonight. There's not, uh, you know, we, we always talk about the trans, the technology and IC and Infinite Campus. We're just getting ready for next year and, uh, and a lot of the things that we're doing. Uh, just to let you know, we are in the middle of our current, um, March upload for IC. And, uh, it is due Friday. But, uh, we do have it, you know, the error list under control, so that's, that's, that's a nice thing. So, uh, we will have a break until I believe May, and then, then we'll have another, uh, opportunity to submit our IC report to the state of Idaho. In your packet is the, uh, our monthly report of our student enrollment. And, uh, kind of what happens at the, the beginning of each try, we do get a little bit of a bump. And, uh, but the, the bump in the elementary schools was kind of surprise. But we did see a little bit of a bump from the prior month, which is, which is good news. I have been, I'm in the middle of doing some projections for next year. And, uh, we had this conversation yesterday about where do we think that we're going to be in the way of units that are generated by all the, the student enrollment? And, uh, just looking at the numbers of the, as they've been following through the year, I'm cautiously optimistic that we might be having something very similar to what we had this year. Might be down a few units, but nothing like the three units or three percent we had anticipated, uh, uh, earlier this year. And of course, you have in front of you tonight, the Wellness Dashboard for the month of February. And, uh, I don't know if our new board members had been, uh, on the board yet, but we had met with our folks in, uh, uh, January with Lockton and, and our carrier. And they had warned us about some big claims coming through. And they said, we have about a hundred and eighty-six percent, uh, utilization. And last prior month, it wasn't as big as we thought it was gonna be. Uh, so it looks like those big claims got paid over two months rather than a single month. And of course, uh, when we have big claims, I guess, month after month, it will have an effect on our renewal. And, uh, we don't know how much yet. But, uh, we will consider whatever we get from Pacific Source and, and those, uh, as we assess our options for the medical insurance, our insurance package is coming this, this, the spring. So, uh, we will see what kind of impact that might have and how it might impact our decision-making with our, our, um, our insurance discussions that we're having now with everything going on through the state. And so with that, that concludes my report tonight. Unless you have other questions for me that I could clarify.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, next on the agenda, Human Resource Report. Brenda Miner will provide the job fair and staffing update.
Good evening. So it is very apparent that spring is here. We have started our hiring and this is an exciting time. It was really enjoyable last week to see these new teachers that are sitting out in the hallway, getting ready to interview. We did our first round of interviews for elementary teachers last week. We interviewed close to, um, twenty candidates. And we start that first interviewing process by the elementary principals being in teams of three. And then they interview the candidates. And then all the principals, after they're done, after they're complete for that day, they sit together and talk about best placements and where those people will fit best and what staff they'll work best with. And just a really, um, collegial opportunity for everyone to understand that if you have three openings, you, and that's the most, you should obviously have the first choice and those kinds of things. And so it was a really neat opportunity to start our hiring process. And we have, we hired nine, and I'm happy to report this year, for some reason, last year looked a little different. But this year, all nine of the teachers that they offered the positions to accepted, so we're off to a good start. And so in our middle schools, we have, uh, seven positions open currently, which are two special education, two math, and three science. In our high school, we have eight positions open, two English, two math, a social studies, a band, science, and special education. Also this week, I am happy for them, but I'm sad for our district that Chuck Orr and Lori Cramney have turned in their retirement papers. Chuck has been with the district for thirty-four years and Lori for forty-five years in our district. I'm sure she started when she was ten, and so we'll go with that. So, um, like I say, this will give a lot of new opportunities for them and a lot of different opportunities for people in our district. And so I'm hopeful to have the district positions opened for the directors, um, on Wednesday.
Can I ask a question about that? Do you typically hire from within for those first or?
We are going to, uh, look internally first.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll, uh, look for district candidates.
Also in the hiring process, we have, um, multiple food service. I, I know Ms. Lozmac talked about Head Start, positions open, transportation, custodial, and our support staff positions, including school psychologists, SLP, and nurses. Also, I will be, um, participating with the other directors in a teacher job fair that is for all, um, Idaho universities on April eighth. Last year, we had a successful, uh, job fair that we did here in July. And I'm hopeful that we will do something similar to that again. Any questions on hiring, staffing? Currently, right now, we have nineteen retirements and twenty-two resignations, just to kind of keep it in the loop on where we are. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Superintendent's Report. That will be presented by Superintendent Howe. He'll report on board calendar and legislative updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, in your packet, uh, on the electronic cloud is there, you have the board calendar. And of course, we're here this evening. And then Thursday, it looks like, uh, Mr. Judy and Mr. Vitale, District Curriculum Committee, uh, Thursday morning. Friday, of course, are the two assemblies that have been mentioned earlier by Mrs. Fisher. And so if you make your way to one of both of those, whatever your schedule will allow. And then, of course, we have spring break coming up next week, as reported by one of our student reps tonight. So, uh, I think we're all decided to get a few days off. Then picking up on Wednesday, March thirtieth, we have set aside some student discipline hearings. I just, a placeholder on your calendar. I don't know that we'll have any yet, but we'll keep you informed. And if we have, uh, if we don't have any, we'll put a cancellation out. And then you can see on Tuesday, April fifth, we have the board and department visits picking up again. That will be the last round of having to go through the different departments. And then in May, we'll pick up with, um, some actual school visits to include the year. On April sixth, we have war training at two-thirty in the afternoon, presented by, uh, Mrs. Lisa Scherr. She'll be back. That'll be our second goal. Can't hear me? Can't hear me? Kind of soft tonight. Uh, and then Tuesday, April twelfth, Judge Murray's Community Prevention Committee. And, uh, then Board Work Session, also on the twelfth. We will have, we've already identified some things that we'll want to talk to you about. We'll revisit, uh, a little bit of the outdoor facilities with you. We will talk with you more about the insurance and where we're going. Mr. Smart mentioned tonight, renewals. We'll have more information, we'll be able to talk to you in depth about those. And, uh, we'll be putting out a survey, as a matter of fact, probably the week when we return from spring break to our staff about the insurances we've discussed in the work session earlier. And then that takes us out about a month, April thirteenth, student discipline hearings and then regular board meeting on the nineteenth. Then we have the Law Institute. I don't recall, I think we have a couple of you that may be planning to attend. And that's on Monday, April twenty-fifth and Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. And so I'll just take out that part with the calendar and let you just produce the rest. I'm gonna only highlight a few of the items from the legislative update that I want to share with you for the sake of time. We have a, a audience here that would like to participate and share some comments with the board, I think in regards to the policy revision that is afforded tonight. But, uh, just a couple of highlights from capital notes. And this was in your packet from Friday that Ms. Johnson put in there, uh, just to share with you the school staff bonus. Initially, that was set up for a thousand dollars for teachers, our certified staff. But, uh, they went back to the drawing board and picked up our classified, which will probably be on a prorated basis, is my understanding. So they're willing to provide that bonus to all staff members, uh, across the board. So that's exciting that they put more money in there to do that for everyone. Uh, the teacher pay raises, it looks like JFA, they concluded their work and, uh, they took the governor's recommendation. And so we'll see the management in the career ladder as well as a movement into what they're calling a one-time bonus into the career ladder movement of twenty-twenty-four. And so we'll be working with our team and coming to the board as we look at preparing for negotiations for the year. Another exciting, uh, part of this package is the school nutrition, uh, program. Will be supplemented by the state, uh, federal stimulus dollars. And, uh, they put in about seventy-four million to maintain, uh, universal free lunch meals for all learners through, um, June of twenty-twenty-three.
Wow.
So that's here. House Bill seven thirty-three on social emotional curriculum. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of talk about that. Face masks, and it is seven thirty-four. And, uh, in regard to homeschooling, uh, seven thirty-two. All of those appear to be dead for this year. And we'll see whether or not they make their way back to next year. Enrollment, uh, replacing average daily attendance. As you know, uh, illness and through the COVID years, the, uh, state board allowed and the legislature approved that, uh, the funding would be based on enrollment rather than the average daily attendance or seat time. And so that will likely continue. It's expected to pass the Senate. It may have already had a hearing. I'm not sure. I gave good final word on that. But it is my understanding that that will likely go through. I've heard that, um, Representative Foreman has asked for a sunset date of two years. So maybe back to an amending order and they'll have more discussion. But at least it, it appears that for two, four years will be based upon enrollment rather than average daily attendance. The, uh, House Bill six-six-nine, which adds, uh, to establish provisions regarding Hope and All, uh, Hope and Opportunity Scholarship Act. As you read in your ISB note, this is essentially what they're considering a voucher bill and oppose this because it takes away from public school funding and there's only so much of pie go around. So if we start funding private schools, uh, that would reduce what, uh, muches that public schools receive. House Bill six-fifty-one, amends existing law to require drug testing and criminal background checks and tests for certain teachers. That was the substitute, um, two years, every two years they would have to undergo those. That passed through the House, but it appears to be dead now, did not go anywhere in the Senate. And so I think that's probably a good thing because we have very responsible administrators that can oversee that on a daily basis. And if there's any, uh, indication, then we would certainly follow up and take care of it. House Bill, uh, six-fifty, to amend the existing law to revise provisions regarding curricular materials adoption committees. That was a twelve-person committee made up of parents, administrators, board members, teachers. This too, it looks like has come back to the amending order. And so they are attempting to reduce the, that committee from twelve, especially for rural districts. You can imagine how hard it might be to fill that number of spots. So we'll see what that looks like. I, that one may come back. It may just die out for the year. And then in regard to the board, having to approve any supplementary material. Your work is challenging enough, let alone sit through hours and hours of presentations in regard to, um, maybe a document that might be used in Spanish or English or math. I cannot even imagine. So, uh, that is dead for the year. And I think with that, unless you have any other questions that you wanted to ask of me, uh, answer in regards to legislative updates, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you.
Okay.
I do, I do have one question on the, on the, you said it was a twelve-person committee that's required by law. Is that right on the curriculum?
That's what the proposal was.
Okay, so that's part of the statute. Okay, I see. To reduce that, okay. Is there still a statute that says that it has to be twenty-five percent parents? Of the?
Yeah.
Or we could look at it, we can find out later.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay.
And there is some question too of whether a parent could also be a teacher if it's charged in a dual capacity.
Uh-huh.
could also be a teacher, if it's sort of in a dual capacity. You know, that's part of the question that came out of this proposed legislative.
Oh, to clarify that?
Yeah.
I see.
So we can clarify, and then I'll let you know.
I see. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, next on, let's see, next on the agenda is public written comment to action items. Written comment was received and is included in the addendum. And I have several requests for a public comment. First on the agenda is Cheryl Lynn Slim.
Where do I go?
Either one. If you can stand up there if you'd like.
Okay, I'll stand here. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here and to have the opportunity to speak to each and every one of you. My name is Cheryl Slim, and I am the mother of a young man named Derek Noson Brown. And he was a dual enrollment student who was to graduate in the Mini Dome in 2004. He went to class at Century in the morning, and then he went to ISU in the afternoon. We were really excited when it was time to graduate. And his grandmother took the opportunity to beat his motorboard, and it took her some time. And of course, a lot of thought and care went into that. Because it is unfortunate, but there are not a lot of Native students who graduate. And in his graduating class, he was the only Shoshone Bannock student. So he asked the principal if it was okay that he wear his cap that was beaded, and they said, absolutely not. And he went on ahead and decided, well, I'm going to, I'm going to make a statement, and I'm going to wear it, and I want to see how they're going to treat me. So his grandfather gave him some eagle plumes, and that's the down that's on the underside of the wings of the eagle. Native American people, through the CFRs, are allowed to possess eagle feathers. And that was a long battle in our courts. And the Supreme Court recognized that Native people have the right to possess eagle feathers. And we use those to this day for ceremonial purposes, and also for our dance regalia. And not everybody, not every Native American person possesses eagle feathers. So it's quite an honor when you can respectfully take care of an item that came from an eagle, which we revere. So Derek's grandfather, who runs our, one of our major ceremonies in Fort Hall, he decided to give him some eagle plumes, so that, and he wore it proudly. He put it on his cap. So the beadwork around the cap was very subtle. You could hardly see it. And then the plumes, of course, were fairly outstanding. So his grandparents, on his paternal side, came from Minnesota, Washington. I mean, we were very proud. And he was an exceptional student, being also a dual enrollment student. And that's very rare for Native American students to balance college and high school. So the day came. We were very happy, sitting there at the Holt Arena. And as the graduates were lining up, the principal of Century High School, and I can't recall his name, came to Derek with an officer and told him, you have to take that off. And the police officer and another gentleman were very intimidating to my son, and they were holding a plain cap under his suit jacket. And so as the officer looked at him, and they said, take that hat off, and put this on, and we'll let you walk. And Derek said, no, I want my family to know that I'm, you know, I'm proud to have these things. It's very meaningful to me. It's spiritual.
You need to wrap up real quick.
Yes. But the experience was horrid. They, the officer escorted my son out. They took him up the stairs, and they locked him out of the Holt Arena. He ran across to the other side, and as the procession came, came across the floor, there was not my son. And it was awful. And that's how Century High School and the school district honored a Native student that was actually exceptional. He recovered from that, and I'm glad to be standing here to be a part of this evening. I understand you're going to change your policy, and I hope that you do with a good heart. I was noticing your sign. It says, Think, Learn, Be More Together. Our people have been here for almost 200 years. I am the fourth generation of Shoshone Bannock people. My son Derek's the fifth, and I think it's about time that we, you make that real. We need to learn to get, learn, like you're saying, learn to be more together. It's about, it's about time that you're going to change that policy, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, just a reminder that you need to make sure that you keep your minutes, your comments to three minutes, because we have several to be done tonight. So next we have, I'm sorry. Is it Sid?
Sid.
Sid Akir? Akir? Okay, Sid Akir?
Good evening. I'm Sid Crewe. Dr. Sid Crewe. And I am a principal at Chief Tagi Elementary Academy now. I used to be a professor in sociology at ISU. And I'm working Fort Hall every day with our students. And it was eighteen years ago that that happened with Derek. I was a professor at ISU at the time, and he was going to ISU and to Century High School. And I thought, what more solemn, more reverent could be worn at graduation than the distinction of family, or close friends, or mentor giving a young man or woman an eagle feather to wear at graduation? And to have your grandmas and aunties bead your hats, which, believe me, it takes a long time. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you. Because when my grandchildren grow up, who are tribal members, they will be able to have this distinction someday. And they're only in first grade and kindergarten, but they'll get there. And I just want to say thank you. I think it is good policy to include these exceptions for Native students, but it's also the right thing to do. This time every year, legal firms who represent Native American rights, Native American Right Fund, this is not like just a Pocatello issue. This is coast to coast. And this is a tradition that I think will encourage future generations of Native children to persevere through the ups and downs of education, to feel like they belong, and that they are respected, and that they're included. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Wayne Crewe.
I wanted to introduce myself in Shoshone because I had to learn that from school. I don't know Shoshone. And a lot of our people, through time, have had to go through different stories and backgrounds, our elders and our young people. At some time, there was a time in our history, we weren't allowed to speak Shoshone. We weren't allowed to practice our ceremonial ways, our practices, or being Indian. And I think that what we're doing here today, I think it's, I'm proud that it's about time that we did this, and I thank you that you're changing this policy. Because like my mom said, my mom's over there. My mom's not a tribal member, and I have a little bit of a history of myself. I was adopted when I was six days old, and into the, not relocation program, but in a sense that I couldn't, I would have not been here if it wasn't for her. I wouldn't have known my people. I wouldn't have came back if it wasn't for her. And I think I'm proud that she was able to do that for us, for my family as well, my kids, they're Shoshone Bannock tribal members as well. And my nephew, he goes to Highland right now. And my sister brought this to my attention earlier today, that this was taking place. And it made me think about, because I graduated from Shoshone Bannock High School out there, and I wore my full regalia, and I was very proud of it. And for our Indian people that also go to Pocatello, Century, Highland, whatnot, it's important for them to be able to express who they are, and to be proud of they are, who they are. Because at one time, we weren't able to do that through the boarding school era. There's, right now, in our communities across the country, we're talking about the boarding schools of 10,000-plus children that are in unidentified graves. Those are some things that our people have to deal with and live with. There's extreme trauma amongst our people. And we have, we're a leading cause in suicide rates, dropout rates. In a lot of outside communities, they don't understand why. Why are some people upset? Why are some people expressing themselves sometimes in anger, out of anger? And those things are because they're not taught in our public schools. I asked my nephew, like, what's he being taught in Highland regarding our history? He's our teacher, and he says that the Indian people had it rough, basically. That was about it. They kind of skipped over it. But my point is that also, I think, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is maybe amend this as well, that it shouldn't be just about federal Indian tribes, maybe people that are proud to be Catholic, or people that are proud to be Buddhist, people that are proud to be Hispanic. The list goes on about diversity. We live in a diverse world. And I think it's important that people from all backgrounds, especially being in America, can express that freely. So, I mean, that's all I had to say. There's a lot of things that was coming through my mind of what I wanted to express, but I think it's important, and I thank you that it's now on the table, and maybe education boards and our staff, that we can work together and get some more curriculum on the table in our public schools, teaching about our true history, Bear River massacre, all the atrocities that's happened. Not just, not out of making people feel bad, but about learning about true history and what's happened to all accounts. I think that's important for all of us to move on in a good way. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Akila Martin. I have what?
Thank you. Is it okay if?
It's okay?
Yeah. Is it okay if the council member, we want Tyler, takes her spot?
We have to stick with, yeah, those who've signed that.
Next we have Juanita Woody.
Hi, and good evening. I'm Janita Woody. I am the vice president of the Indian and Parent Committee, but tonight, I'm coming here as a parent. I just want to tell you, you know, I hope you guys do consider this change in a positive way. You know, my oldest daughter, she's going to be the second in our family to graduate this year. And I'm very proud of her. You know, she's gonna be given the gift of her first eagle feather in her life. And I want her to cherish that moment, and to wear it, and to be proud of it. You know, it's 12 years of going to school. It's a lot for our children. We don't see very many of our youth graduating, and it's sad, but it's the truth. So I just ask that you take that into consideration, you know. And I just, next year, my daughter, she'll be able to earn her first eagle feather. And I want to see more of our youth from here on out, you know, to be proud of who they are. You know, and it's not just about natives. I want to see more cultural diversity in Pocatello. And our youth needs that right now. We need that. And I just wanted to tell you, you know, thank you for giving us this time, and, you know, thank you, just take into consideration, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then back to Alana Baldwin.
Good evening again. I won't take very long of your time. I actually brought something to read for everybody, not just for you. People will say, how could we have known that things were so bad? It was long ago. They'll say, it's the past. They'll say, let it go. They'll tell you it's exaggerated. They'll tell you it's not so. But this begs the question, how could you not know? When the lands were stolen and the treaties were signed? When they starved out the people to keep them in line? When we wrote the new laws and the new predications and sent them away to forest reservations? How could you not know? When children were torn from their mother's arms and told they would come to no harm? And fathers pled at schoolhouse gates for knowledge of their children's fates? How could you not know? When we stole their language, when we stole their stories, took over all of their territories, killed the Indian to save the man? There is so much blood upon our hands. How could you not know? When they came from all around and showed such courage and stood their ground, they told us their stories and opened wounds, wounds so deep they could consume. How could you not know? When women were undertaken for slaughter, stolen sisters, mothers, and daughters? When it's declared a genocide, another truth we cannot hide. How could you not know? And silently, the children lay in perfect rows in unmarked graves, in empty fields and parking lots, below RVs and trailer parks? And so I ask, all due respect, how could you not know? When history is laid out before us, it sings its truth, just like a chorus. Painful song that we must hear must not deny demean or fear. So pay attention, let it haunt you. Stop saying you didn't know, and you just didn't want to. That's all. Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, we will move on to action items. Is Angie still with us?
I'm going to call her for action. I know that's a thing.
Okay, we'll see if we can get Angie back on the phone. Okay. Okay, first on the item of business is to approve the submission of the 2022-2023 Head Start Continuation Grant Application, inclusive of selection criteria, self-assessment plan, and the non-federal share waiver. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the submission of the Head Start Continuation Grant Application, inclusive of the selection criteria, self-assessment plan, and non-federal share waiver.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion passed. Next on the item is to approve the Head Start Transportation Waiver Request. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the Head Start Transportation Waiver Request as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passed. The next item of business, approve the early graduation request. Is there a motion?
I hereby move the board approve the early graduation request as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passed. Next on the business is to hear on first reading the adoption policy 8504, student dress code. Is there a motion?
I hereby move the board here on first reading the adoption policy 8504, student dress code as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
So does this mean we're approving it?
Yes.
Yes.
So the only discussion I have, or question I have, is what are we opening? I mean, I am all in favor. I think this is a wonderful thing. But I also think, and I don't know what needs to happen, but I think there will be other groups that come forward that will ask for a similar accommodation. And so does that need to wait until those come forward? Or does there need to be an amendment to this to include? That's the only thing I.
Yeah. And I know it was brought up that, you know.
Additional inclusion, other groups, other religions.
Sue, do you want to come up?
Because I think that's the can that's going to get opened. And why not address it now?
I agree with it. I agree with you, but right now, we probably need, I think we need to approve this.
By way of Robert's rules, you could provide a friendly amendment if you have language that you'd like to propose or you can wait on the adoption for a time. Again, we brought this forward knowing that, you know, if approved, it would take the family some time to.
Right, I understand that.
And so, or we could address those as individual requests forward. Again, the way that I, Sue, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the way it's being presented, cultural or religious. So we're trying to put.
That's a whole group. That's a lot of group.
Yeah. But yet, not just in any random fashion. So Sue, I know you've had some further discussions and looked into this a little bit more. So I'll just ask for your comment as well.
So our other option might be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is to adopt it as it's written. And we can bring you an amended, we can talk about it at work session and bring you an amended that it would include other groups, if you would like. Like I said, I called several other big school districts and said, do you allow decorations? Do you not allow decorations? Three said yes, two said no. It's, I will tell you that some of the concern is that the decorations will be.
Outlandish.
Well, outlandish, but just out of district policy on what you can and cannot put on your clothing for school. So we're going to have to be very careful writing what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. I mean, I took some time to do a little research myself. And there are numerous guidelines that are out there. You know, what is acceptable and what is not. I mean, there's even some that, you know, you have to get them approved prior. And I understand that creates an issue. I mean, and I mentioned this during our work session, is that two years ago, when we did the parade and my son graduated, I mean, such a show of individuality. And here is an opportunity where these students are moving from structure and being able to really show their individuality. You know, it was, it probably was one of the most memorable graduations that we experienced as opposed to just being one in the crowd. And so very similarly to what some of our natives are sharing, I think there are other groups and. And I would agree with that. They will feel the same. And so that's my question, is whether this, and I know I'm getting some looks, that I'm opening this can, but I do feel like there is, there's an opportunity here to let kids, you know, with some guidelines, with some structure that can allow them to have this opportunity to venture forth into the new beyond. I don't know. And I'm not trying to diminish the importance of what is being asked for here, because I think it's, I fully support it. And that's what I'm trying to say, is that I fully support this, but I think there are others that would feel the same.
I agree with you. And I had the same concern when I first read this, that what, you know, what are we opening up to the public? And I guess one thing we could do is adopt this tonight and then amend it again at another time, right?
Because I do appreciate that there's the time. Right. Being involved to do what is necessary. And I would, you know, I would say we could leave it till next month, but that, it's time. Yeah. No, I, like, so if that's something we're able to do, again, I'm very new in how these procedures work. But I would like to leave that door open, that we continue to have the conversation, if so weren't. Absolutely. So.
Yeah, we can deal with that later.
Yeah, I was thinking that I kind of want to respect this as its own thing, because I feel like this is very important and it's been waited for, for a long time. And we have people here that are wanting this to pass today. I would like it to pass today. We can revisit again and have another conversation, pass another memorandum. That's what I would suggest.
Okay. And it's, as the board talks amongst yourselves through that discussion, yeah. So right now, as Chairman Facer mentioned, you could adopt this one, ask us to take a look at it, prepare, you know, a possible revision in the coming month or so. And then to, or we could, as, I don't know if I said Judy correctly, but, you know, and then if those future requests come, so I'm not sure what you want to do, but you could definitely adopt tonight and give us direction for future guidance as well.
And right now, we have a motion.
And a second.
A second.
So after that discussion, we would just call for a vote.
Okay. All righty. Have a motion, we have a second. We've had the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't see any. That motion has passed. Okay, next on the business is to adopt the 2022-2023 New Horizon School Year Calendar. Is there a motion?
I move that the board adopt the 2223 New Horizon High School Calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, could we have some quiet, please? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, did I finish that? I guess that passed, I'm sorry. Okay, next on the agenda of business is to approve the out-of-state overnight travel request. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the out-of-state overnight travel request as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion has passed. Okay, next on the agenda of business is to approve the camp request. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the camp requests.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passed. Next on the business is to approve athletic sponsorship agreement with Idol Central Credit Union. Oh, I'm sorry. I just jumped right over, didn't I? I did. Next on the agenda is to approve the use of district football helmets and pads for the summer football camp. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that the board approve the use of district football helmets and pads for the summer football camps.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I guess not. The motion passed. Next on the agenda is approve the athletic sponsorship agreement with Idol Central Credit Union. Is there a motion?
I hereby move that we approve the athletic sponsorship agreement with ICCU.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passed. The final item of business is toward the following bids, bleachers, carpet, modular classrooms, and the VCT tile. Is there a motion?
I move that the board award the following bids as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't have a discussion, sorry. That motion passed. Okay. Next on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.